The March 10, 2021 informal session. And I will say it's very nice to see everybody's faces here this morning. Bobby and I were by ourselves for awhile and it wasn't any fun. So I'm glad to see y'all here. Saying that, we're ready to turn it over to Mr. Tahan. Is there anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We walked into a little bit of a different layout today, so I apologize for some of the confusion this morning as things got turned around for the City Council Retreat. This morning, we do have, as you know, we have a very important item for short-term rentals coming on the agenda. We're planning on doing the briefing on the short-term rental regulations after we go through the rest of the agenda for the briefing, so that the commission can have time to speak through those items. Mr. Kemp will walk you through all those. He did hand out a sheet for that. Before we get started with that, we do want to make sure, make a couple announcements before I hand it over to Ms. Wilson for discussion about FOIA and abstentions. I do want to congratulate Wa. Wa has accepted and is now our Planning Evaluation Coordinator. He takes over the position for Bill Landfair. So we're thankful for Wa and his continued dedication for not running away from us when we were in complete shambles at some point. But Wa has been a very great employee and has kept us moving. And so we're very thankful for him accepting the position to take over as a Planning Evaluation Coordinator that staffs your, the Planning Commission. One more thing, I think, before I hand it over to Ms. Wilson, again, we just want to say thank you. We do want to, well, maybe we just won't note that. There is a card being passed around. I think Wa's taking care of it. The commission's aware of that. I don't want to put people's information out there, but if you feel the need to sign the card, we appreciate that for one of our staff members. Ms. Wilson, would you like to take over for a moment to talk about abstentions?
I don't have my own mic. I don't have my own mic, so I'm going to come here. Okay, abstentions. We have been doing them not quite right. We've been doing them better than we have in the past, but not quite right. Okay, you'll have a little thing that says conflicts of interest. Okay, everybody got one? Yes, okay, we've got a conflicts of interest.
I took these.
There we go. What I would like for you to do is look through the agenda before this morning. And, I know that's hard, and call me and tell me if you have a conflict or if you want to discuss a conflict. Because then what I can do is have ready for you a pretty letter. That will be your conflict letter and you won't have to stumble through it all. Then this goes in the minutes and then everybody in the world knows that you abstained. Okay? That's what we need to do. What we're missing from most of our abstentions is an address. So if you abstain because of your employer, you need the address for your employer in the abstention. Don't ask me why. That's what the law says, okay? So that's what I would like. However, if you get here, and I know sometimes you get here and then you realize you need to abstain, I understand that, just read this out, okay? And then hand it to me. The next day, in 24 hours, I will get you a letter. You will sign it, you will send it back to me, and then I'll scan it out to everybody. Okay? Now that sounds easy, right? Okay, that's where I'm going. So if you've got to do it oral, follow the little template. If you can get to me, I'll get you a written one and then all you have to do is read it. Okay? That would be really helpful. And then we'll be good. I'm going to wipe this off because you never know. Although I have been vaccinated, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Redmond.
Ms. Wilson's appeal is very timely and it seems like a good segue for me to bring this up. This is my letter. Mr. Weiner and I have had this discussion, as have Ms. Wilson and I henceforth. I will be abstaining from any and all short-term rental applications as well as from consideration of the ordinance. The, and the reasons are as follows. I'm going to repeat this when we get into the formal so everybody understands. And of course, I have this letter, which Ms. Wilson helpfully provided for me and which I discussed with her, and this is why I was not a participant in our last workshop. The, I have a small client who is a little travel agency called Expedia Cruises. I help them find shopping center space. You know, Mr. Wa goes in, wants to take a cruise to Cancun, he can sit down, pick out a package, and away he goes. It is part of Cruises' short-term rentals, eh, you might not see the connection. It is part of a much larger company called Expedia Group, which owns a whole bunch of, I mean, you know, a whole bunch of travel assets. A couple of the assets they own are booking sites. HomeAway and VRBO are owned by the parent company. I learned this while reading the newspaper recently, didn't know it. So anyway, I skipped our workshop, got ahold of the city attorney, and regardless of what they have to say about it, I have decided on my own that I don't think it would be appropriate for me to participate in those discussions because I don't know who might have used either of those sites on a particular short-term rental. And certainly with regard to the ordinance, I don't think that would be appropriate for me to participate. Wouldn't be fair for me to fire the client, wouldn't be fair for my employer, wouldn't be fair for any of us. Because I think the most important thing we have to do is preserve not just the substance, but the appearance of our objectivity and independence of thought. Wherever that line is, as an attorney friend told me, I don't want to get anywhere near it. And so I'm going to stay as far away from it as possible. And so I do have a letter, which now I have signed. This is my copy. Ms. Wilson prepared it for me. Very painless process. If there's anything like that that you have, I would encourage you to do it. I've always thought that anybody that came anywhere near conflicts of interest is dumber than a box of rocks, and that ain't me. So, anyway, I will disappear later on when we get into that part of our, of our, of our agenda, and that'll continue, you know, as far as the eye can see, so far as I can tell. Thank you, Mr. Weiner.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions? Ms. Wilson, I just, can you come up? I just got a question for you. My question is, where I live and where I have rental properties, if it's in close proximity, what is your recommendation? I know we've talked about this, I just wanted it out in the public.
Well, it really is up to you, but what I would say is that you are, oh, you can't hear me? I was trying to avoid wiping off the thing again.
Okay.
If you are next door, I would say you probably have a pecuniary, a monetary interest in whether or not this goes in because of the value to you. If you're further away, you may not have a pecuniary interest. We probably need to discuss this a little more closely. Where are these? Are these close enough to you to affect your home?
Are you asking me now?
Well, yeah.
Well, I don't, we've had some, and I've disclosed it, but I don't know if I'm going to have anymore.
You can't disclose it and be a member of a group, as long as there's three people in the group.
Okay.
So if you're, you know, there's more than that that would be affected by this. So if you want to say, you'd still have to disclose, and you have to say, you know, I believe that I am a member of a group, and so I will not have to abstain. That group would be all those who will be affected, that kind of thing. If you want to abstain, if you don't want to abstain, I don't think there's any legal obligation for you to abstain unless you're next door.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Good, because now I'm going to wipe this again. Just ignore me, go ahead.
Mr. Tahan.
Mr. Chair, I know there have been a couple instances when we've had some longer meetings where planning commissioners have had to step out from the discussion and the, and the input from the public, and have chosen to abstain because they weren't there for the discussion. That is still okay, but just for the record, we want to make sure that we note in the record that I was not, I was not in the room for the discussion and the deliberation, so I'm abstaining because I did not have the additional information. There's nothing wrong with that, but we just want to make sure it's clear for the record. More than likely, you can tell that Ms. Wilson and I have been pinged on a couple of these for the last 15 years, so we're going back and looking through all of it. So, again, nothing wrong with that type of abstention. We just do want to make sure we note it for the record so that we can, we can have clear records. Yes, ma'am?
If we're abstaining, do we have to step out?
No, just pull your chair back, don't talk.
Okay.
Informal or formal, okay? You do not have to step out, although if I was Mr. Redmond, I would. Yeah, yeah, because it's, yeah, you're going to have a third of the meeting. And when he does, Mr. Weiner, if you would say, Mr. Redmond has left the meeting, it just gets on the minutes and it explains why it's only eight or nine people voting.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Yes, Dave?
Before, thank you for that. Before we get too far, I want to compliment the staff who put, who did this whole new setup. This is much brighter, and these screens that are placed in front of us, I think, will be very helpful in terms of going through this agenda. So for all you folks who, I know this doesn't take, I mean, you don't do this in 15 minutes, so I know this took some thought and some work, so thank you guys for that.
Anybody else? All right. Mr. Tahan, ready to move on?
Yes, sir, Mr. Weiner. We'll go ahead and move through the briefings for the agenda. Like we said before, we'll skip over the short-term rental discussion to save it for the end, just so that Mr. Redmond has the opportunity to step away also, but to give you time to deliberate and discuss any of the things that may come up during the hearing. So we'll go ahead and hand it over.
All right, the first item is the resolution for the 2021 Planning Commission.
Excuse me, Wa, can you speak up just a little bit? I know I'm hard to hearing, but just, just a little bit, thank you.
The first item today is the resolution for the upcoming 2021 Planning Commission dates. And then we'll, I'll go to the, we'll skip the second item for, and then we're going to go to the third item.
Hold on one second, real quick. That, that can go right on the consent agenda, correct? On the, on item one, we can just write it on the consent agenda, no problem?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Real quick, I'm sorry, let's make sure we got this right. So we're going to be, are we going to be reading these agenda items into the record like we usually do?
That is, that is up to you, Mr. Chair.
I mean, that's what we usually do, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Do, can I, can Wa, can you just explain item one real quick when we go through the consent agenda? Okay? All right, all right, okay, thank you.
Item number three today is Pressman Construction Services LLC. This is a conditional use permit for automobile service station. The applicant seeks to redevelop this site with a 4,000 square feet convenience store with four, with eight fuel pumps. The 35,000 square feet vacant lot is Zone B2, community business located in the Shore Drive corridor in the Bay Side District. The proposed building features coastal architecture consists of fiber cement and shake siding and brick veneer with a metal roof. The few canopy and dumpster enclosure matches the architectural material of the proposed The layout plan show planting along Pleasure House Row, Shore Drive, and within the parking, within the parking lot. The proposed development will reduce the number of entrances along Shore Drive and Pleasure House Road from four to two. The existing sidewalks along Shore Drive will be replaced with new sidewalks, and new sidewalks will be installed along Pleasure House Road. Staff find the proposal to be consistent with the recommendation of the comprehensive plan that identify, the Shore Drive corridor is a primary residential neighborhood with commercial uses to support the residence. The plans recommend the reuse and revitalization of the existing commercial properties and preserve and protect the character of the established neighborhood. The applicant has worked with staff in the Bayfront Advisory Commission on the site layout and building elevations that are presented to you today. The proposal meets the requirement of the Shore Drive corridor design guidelines that include the use of neutral colors, high-quality architecture style, and building materials that are compatible with the character of the community. And based on the consideration described and further detail in the staff report, staff recommends approval of this request, subject to the conditions listed in the report. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Are there any questions?
Dave?
Well, I find it curious that 7-Eleven would approve two sites on the same side of Shore Drive within such close proximity to one another. We considered another one, what was it, a month, two months ago? But, you know, that's their decision. So the question before us, as always, is what is the appropriateness of this use to this particular parcel of real estate? I mean, is it, is, does the land use make sense? I don't find any reason why it doesn't. I mean, it seems to be a perfectly appropriate place for this kind of use. It's been a vacant parcel for my entire adult life, at least as far as I can remember. I'm extremely familiar with this neck of the woods, and I think it would be an obvious and vast improvement to this one parcel, so I think it's entirely appropriate for consent.
Would you read this one?
Sure.
Item number four is Grace Bible Church of Virginia Beach, Inc. The applicant seeks to modify conditions of the 2017 conditional use permit to allow for changes in site design related to the parking layout, building footprint, and elevations, as well as changes to the stormwater strategy. The revised layout showed the parking lot as further away from the residences. Because the site is elevated, because the site elevation sits below the elevation of the street, approximately three to four feet of fill is proposed. Two landscape buffer will screen the right parking lot from the adjacent residential neighborhood. The first 10-feet landscape buffer is proposed on top of a three-feet berm with a six-foot tall solid fence. The second landscape buffer will be a 15-feet landscape buffer along the property line with the adjacent neighborhood. The development will be constructed in two phases. The first phase will be approximately 17,000 square feet building with 350 seats. The second phase would add 20, approximately 28,000 square feet for a total of 45,000 square feet with, and 800, 800 seats. The two landscape buffer between the proposed church and parking for the residents will be built during Phase One. As proposed, the development exceeded parking requirements by 207 spaces. To ensure that the development will not negatively impact the surrounding residents, staff has recommended a condition, a condition that lighting be shielded and directed onto the site and limiting the height of the outdoor light fixtures. Development, the Development Service Sensors reviewed the preliminary stormwater management analysis and finds that the submitted stormwater strategy has the potential to successfully comply with the stormwater regulations. And based on the consideration described in further detail in the report, staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions listed in the reports. According to the applicant, a virtual meeting with the surrounding neighborhood took place on January 28th to discuss the project. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request at this time. Are there any questions?
Mr. Horsley? Thoughts?
Now, I agree that this, this can be put on, should be put on the consent agenda. I think this is going to fix a lot of problems in that area that have been created and that wasn't the church's fault, anyway. So I think this needs to be put on consent agenda.
Hey, Jack?
Okay, yeah, and I concur. I mean, I feel it should go on the consent agenda, but I do have a couple things just to, just to bring up, just want to rehash some, not necessarily rehash, but discuss a couple things with this application. Because it, it came through, but those parcels, that area adjacent to Lunda Bridge Road, we had, we had quite a bit of discussion on that, and there was some pushback on, on rezoning that area to, to commercial, which it's not. That area remains, what does that remain? Is it, what is that, the parcels that are in the fronting Lunda Bridge Road?
They're, they're still agricultural.
So they're still agricultural, right. But the church, does the church own those, own those parcels?
No, I don't believe the church owned that prop, those properties.
Okay, so the church doesn't own that property. So someone else owns it with the anticipation that potentially in the future developing that. But I think that was some of the development, or that was some of the pushback previously, wasn't it? Was, was that, you know, the line of sight, you know, traffic accidents? So I'm fine with the way it is. I mean, it would have been nice, you know, to pull it away from the neighborhood to a certain extent to provide more buffer, but it looks like they've, they've gone to a decent effort to, to provide a buffer screening. And the, the second thing, you know, I want to bring up is that, you know, we've had similar church expansions where we've hated that have presented quite a problem to the city and to the surrounding community because of this very same issue, same thing right there, that they, they brought their parking lot up two to three feet. You know, the lights, the, just the impacts, you know, didn't preserve hardly any buffer, really any buffer, and planted a few, few trees, and, and, you know, much heartache with the, the surrounding properties. So, but, you know, I'm assuming that this has been looked at, that it appears that the buffer is, is greater than what, what it was in the case that, you know, I'm discussing or.
Piney Grove.
Yes, yes, Piney Grove.
Mr. Wa, so yes, the, the buffers increased, so they pulled the parking lot away from the adjacent properties. They provided landscaping, essentially landscape buffers at both the base of the berm, essentially, where they're doing their stormwater management next to the properties, as well as up at the top to help to screen any potential impacts. So that was one of the key points to, to try to mitigate the issues similar to what we had at the, at another application location, so. But again, they have two, two buffers, essentially, one up high to screen the parking lot in the parking area, as well as there's a condition to limit the lighting in the perimeter of the parking area to, to no taller than four foot, while the lights on the interior of the parking area are no, no taller than 12 foot, so, or 12 or 14 foot.
Ms. Oliver?
So Bobby, yeah, this, this got my attention only because of the previous expansion on the church with the parking lot being raised and the, the issue with the lighting with the neighbors. It was, impacted them very much so. The other thing was that the berm, I just want to make sure that it stays as it is depicted, only because we've had some problems with berms in the past that they weren't, they weren't either to the height or to the description when the developer went in and did it on other sites. And I think we had, we had a problem once with a berm. I think it was out on Taylor Farm on that as well, that it wasn't kept up to the specifics that was intended.
I probably should clarify, so when I say berm, and I apologize for the misunderstanding, so the elevated portion that they have where the parking area is, is where the, so they're elevated and their stormwater management goes underneath. Adjacent to that elevated portion, Nicole, can you go to the profile? Yep, that one. Adjacent to that elevated portion is the first landscape buffer, which includes a fence there, okay? And so then, it's not really a berm, it's actually part of that, that level ground. Then it slopes off to this other, to this increased landscape buffer area that's adjacent to the property line. So it can't reduce. If it does, it means there's something wrong with their stormwater management. It has to stay in that, that height, in that location.
One thing is that on this, on their layout schematic, they've got a hatch pattern on there where that pipe shows on the perimeter that, that appears to be gravel. I guess what they're representing is the gravel underneath, that that's the berm that were, that you were just mentioning, is that it's, is where it's rising up. And then the pipe is the perimeter piece, because if you look at it, that hatching is in gravel.
Right, yeah, that's, that's part of their stormwater management solution.
That's underground, and above that is earth. And they, do they have?
That's correct, Mr. Wa, you're correct.
Okay.
Can, I'm sorry, Nicole, can you go back to the, the profile again? That gravel hatching you see is the gravel hatching shown in this profile. It is underground.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I'd like to add that Wa and I actually walked the site last week. This site is tremendously larger than the other site was, the Piney Grove. Also, this site is the closest to the neighborhood in some, the closest to the neighborhood's 170 to 160 feet from the berm, from the neighborhood line. So this is a lot farther away than, than we did, than we had the other project with. So I feel, I feel really comfortable walking the site. When I walked the site with Wa, I felt really comfortable with this one. So I'm good for the consent also. Good consent?
Okay.
Mr. Horsley, would you like to read that one, Hors? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we're good.
So Mr. Horsley's going to read this?
Yes.
Item five is a street closure request to close the 25-feet wide by 125-feet-long unimproved portion of Holly Row adjacent to 40, 401, 49th Street. The portion of the right way has been used as a private driveway for decades, providing access to the home directly from the unimproved railway. A viewers' meeting was held on December 2nd and determined that a proposed closure will, with the required easement to the city, will not result in any public inconvenience. Staff is recommending approval of the street closure request, subject to condition listed in the report. Staff received one letters of concern for this request. The letter noted the need for pedestrian access between 49th and 58th Streets, and request for a 10-feet access easement with the proposed closure area to be retained for pedestrian access.
Yes, ma'am.
Could we please go back to the photograph? And can someone show me there what part is looking to be closed, please?
It would be the, the driveway to the left. That is right now the portion, the half portion of the right way that is proposed to be closed.
Okay, so half of the driveway?
The entire, the entire driveway. So the half proportion of the right way extend to a little bit beyond that driveway, and so it's, it's the west half.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tahan. I received a call about this, this weekend. I think he's going to be here to present.
After, we're going to hear this one. Yeah, he told me yesterday he was going to be here to speak.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Wa, this, I wish, I would like, in the future, if you all could give us a better photograph so that you can actually see where this road is in regards to the house. Because if I'm not mistaken, the house sits sideways, is that correct? Is that the house that sits sideways on that street? I mean, I know I can Google Map it, but I'm not very good with that.
So, the, the front door of this house actually faces that driveway.
Right.
Yes, so it is sideways, yes.
Just curious, why do they want to close that when that is available parking for them? I mean, are they closing it to put a driveway in? Just trying to figure this out.
So they have a driveway right there, right now, they just want to close it because a portion of their porch is encroaching into it, and of course, they have their driveway in that right way also.
Right.
So they just want to close that so that they absorb that half portion of the unimproved right way.
So I'm trying not to be, so is the entire road their driveway, or is part of it public street?
Half of it, so their driveway is entirely within the right way. The right- The right way, the entire width of the right way is 50 feet. They are only closing the western half of the 25 feet.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, Robin.
Their driveway, this public right of way, is that a through street? Or does it go to a dead end?
Right now, um, it's kind of dead end. It dead's end with that, where their property starts right now.
Okay, so could I walk from Holly Road and go all the way down their driveway and get to the alley? Yes, okay.
Potentially, yes. There is a strip, uh, I believe a 10, 15 foot strip alley on the back of their property.
Okay.
First.
But it doesn't connect all the way to 50th Street.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Redmond.
I mean, my question is, who cares? I mean, this is, if you read the staff report, this, this section of Holly Road has been plotted, platted for over 100 years and has never been improved or utilized as a public street. The western portion of this unimproved right of way has been used as a private driveway for decades with portions of the porch in the right of way for many years, providing access to the home directly from the unimproved right of way. There are paper streets all over the place that serve no purpose. They serve no purpose whatsoever. There, and there is ample precedent, I can tell you, because the better part, 20 years ago, my neighbor across the street had a private paper street, I mean, a, a public paper street that was platted decades ago, served no purpose whatsoever. He and the neighbor, he and his neighbor came to the city, had that closed, paid them a chunk of money for the land, which has, you know, not much value. This doesn't have any value really, if you think about it. City will get some monetary compensation because it has some nominal value, but it doesn't do anything. And so the idea that we have these paper streets that don't really do anything doesn't seem to me to make any sense. It, it just seems to make a lot more sense that they be incorporated into this. Another 100 years it will not change. So I think we're getting way too wrapped up about something that really doesn't amount to anything. Thank you.
Mr. Carson.
I actually took time to ride by and look at it the other day because of the call and, uh, from my point of view, the public safety aspect. Because I didn't realize it was a paper street until I actually rode down there and looked. The neighbors are in the right of way also. I mean, that park, that driveway is, is part of the right of way. It, it doesn't look like, I mean, it would take somebody to actually redevelop all three of those lots and it would be of no benefit to them because they would lose space. So it, it, I think it's a moot point, just like he says, it's never going to be used for anything.
Right. Mr. Akraz.
Well, I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Redmond. I think we should close the whole street. The adjacent neighbors probably going to want to do the same thing. But just throwing that out there.
Just a little information. There is originally, you know, there was an effort to try to get the applicant to closer entire street. The application was submitted and everything. But due to family related issues, the eastern half of the site, they, they had to withdraw their applications because of family related issues.
Mr. Wall.
Well, there's, it doesn't appear that there's any access on 50th Street. I mean, even if.
There's not, there's a house there.
There's a house there.
There's a house behind it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Anybody else? Well, I think we all know there's a lot of streets in the north end that are like this and that are not, you can't, nothing can be used. So there's something, I think this basically is just doing, clearing up some things and I personally have no issue with it. But I think we are going to hear this because I believe this gentleman told me he was coming in to speak. Did he sign up to speak, Wa? Mr. Hayes?
Hey, yeah.
Yes.
David Hayes.
David Hayes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're going to hear this. All right, moving on.
The next items are item six and seven for Damm Next Storage LLC. The separate, the subject property is known as Vector Park was zoned from, was rezoned from AG1 and AG2 agriculture districts to conditional I1 industry district in 2005 for office warehouse and storage uses. The southern partial was developed with self-storage units. The eastern half of the site is developed with office warehouse and bulk storage yard. The applicant now seeks a modifications of proffers and a conditional use permit to expand the office warehouse and bulk storage yard uses onto the remaining western half of the site. The modification of proffers requests include amendments of proffers one, two, and four that were associated with the 2005 rezoning. Except for proffers one, two, and four that are proposed to be amended for the western portion of the site, the proffers associated with the 2005 rezoning remain in effect for the entire Vector Park development site. The proposal includes four office warehouse building totaling approximately 24,000 square feet and two area for bulk storage, storage yards. The storage yard areas are fenced in by an eight-foot tall privacy fence, privacy and chain link fence. The majority fence is solid except chain link fences proposed along the eastern side of the subject site that faces the interior of the lot, not visible from the public railway. This is a deviation to the requirement of section 222 of the zoning ordinance, which require bulk storage yard area to be enclosed by a category four screening, consists of a minimum six-feet-tall fence and category one with, within a minimum of five-feet-wide planting bed. Since the storage area will be screened by existing wooded area to be preserved, staff is agreeable to the, to the deviation request. The proposed building materials and style are consistent with the buildings on site. Traffic engineering staff reviewed the request and no concerns were raised as the use for storage yard and office warehouse generate very low, low traffic volume. In addition, Development Service Center reviewed the preliminary stormwater management analysis and find that the storm, the submitted stormwater strategy has the potential to successfully comply with the stormwater regulations. Based on this consideration and further detail in the report, staff recommends approval of this request, subject to the conditions and deviation as stated in the report. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Are there any questions?
I have to abstain from this item, so Mr. Wall will take over.
Okay.
Well, was there a change in the fencing type? From wood to plastic? Vinyl? For this?
The proposal is a, for a solid fence. It doesn't specify whether we be wood or vinyl.
Okay.
If you have a preference, we can certainly make that a condition.
I don't have a preference, whatever the applicant.
Yeah. The existing fence on site right now is a vinyl fence.
Okay, no, I don't have a preference, whatever suits the applicants. Yes, Bobby.
Ms. Oliver, just to note, the, I believe the applicant's representative one was requesting that the, it just be noted to be a solid fence and for them to choose the material based on the location. So, um, we don't, although the rest of the site does use a vinyl or, or a different type of maintenance free fence, the location where this wood fence would go is adjacent to the wooded area essentially and not visible from the right of way. So staff is, is indifferent to what type of fence material that would go here.
Thank you, it was just a question someone had and I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Just to clear that up a little, oh, sorry. Didn't mean to get you in trouble. Jack.
Yes.
The applicant's representative on the way in told me that they intended to put a wooden fence in there. And that is for appearance sake, the vinyl that's on the other portions of the site has got some discoloration, all that. They just think it'll look a lot better if they have a wooden fence. And it seems to me that's a very good reason to choose that, that material over and on. So I would certainly support that.
No, I, that was, I was just trying to clear, I was trying to clarify that because there was some confusion on that. Thanks.
Is anybody else? I've got a, a couple of questions. One is the, there's the 15-foot buffer, which is, they plan to maintain and then replant 15 feet. But curious, and, and city staff may not know this, but part of, part of the wooded area right there is in the right of way. So 15 feet is not very wide, but I believe that, um, that they can only clear up to, that 15 feet is within their property line. So outside of that, they wouldn't be able to touch what's on the right of way. So even though they are preserving 15 feet, replanning 15 feet up to the back of their, their buildings, the buffer may be a little bit bigger, a little bit wider than that. Would you concur? Would staff concur on that, or?
That's correct. So the applicant can only preserve the 15-feet buffer from where their property line starts as well as replanting that 15 feet. The 15-feet replanting proposed area had to be removed in order for them to put up the building there.
Okay. All right, and I don't think that it's, it would be visible from Drake's Mile. No, just the way that it, most of it is, I mean, there's already a property, a use between Drake's Mile and, and this use. So I'm, I'm fine with consent. Oh, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, and, and to be clear, this, I mean, this whole area is, is covered with this kind of product. I mean, there are warehouses and distribution facilities and all that. And we've, over the years, because of its proximity to Oceana, have encouraged these kinds of uses in this part of the city. So the use itself is entirely appropriate. Even if you can see it, you can see an awful lot of them in there if you, um, at Taylor Farm and, and all up and down a lot of these roads that are around there. So, I mean, it fits very well within the established uses in this part of the city. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Could somebody read this into the record? Any volunteers? Okay, all right, thank you, Rob. All right, Ms. Klein's going to read this into the record. Okay, thank you.
We will now move to the short-term rental part of the agenda. Our sta, our staff, Will Millers, will present the item eight virtually.
Case number eight. Staff recommends to the planning commission that this item be deferred for 30 days due to nonposting of the required public notification yard signs as described in Appendix A, Article One, Section 108A of the city zoning ordinance. In this instance, the signs were not retrieved by the applicant's representative until March 4th, 2021. All right, case number nine. 721 13th Street, this is in the Beach District. This 5,250-square-foot lot is located within the R5D residential district and contains one single-family dwelling. According to city records, this home was constructed in 1984 and contains three bedrooms. The applicant purchased the home on May 29th, 2020. The property lies within the RPPP boundary where parking during the evening and overnight hours is limited. Based on this, a condition is recommended that would prohibit the occupants of the short-term rentals from parking in the street during the restricted hours. No records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use were found associated with the subject address. The applicant accepts city council's recently imposed conditions, reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom. This property is located within the Lakewood subdivision, which is a neighborhood composed of a multitude of housing types with a few scattered commercial uses. The subject property sits within a neighborhood block comprised of single-family dwellings and duplex dwellings. Because the home contains three bedrooms, three off-street parking spaces are required. However, the existing driveway configuration can only accommodate two spaces without impeding the, onto the city sidewalk or into the city sidewalk. As a result, the applicant proposes to add one additional parking space, abutting the existing driveway. By doing so, all three off-street parking spaces would be accounted for and none would obstruct the city sidewalks. Recommended condition number three was added to address this matter. As permitted by section 241-21 of the city zoning ordinance, the zoning administrator reviewed the applicant's parking configuration and deemed it acceptable. Together with the requirements of 241-2 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals, a condition is recommended that limits the number of residential parking permit program parking passes to two and prohibits the issuance of guest and temporary passes through the program while the conditional use permit is active. Based on these considerations, staff recommends approval of this request with the conditions listed in the staff report. Staff received no letters of support and no letters of opposition relating to this request. I'll stand by for any questions you may have regarding this item.
Mr. Akraz.
Oh, yeah, um, excuse me, I haven't received any calls, any emails on this one. I do put a lot of weight on that, so, um, haven't said that. They meet all the criteria and again, I haven't received any opposition, so I'm going to recommend consent.
Okay. I have, the only issue I have is the parking. The, 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 in the, up here, in the background summary, site condition, and history, the zoning administrator has typically, historically preferred to use more permeable surface material. Nevertheless, the zoning administrator approved the applicant's plan but left out the possibility of working the applicant to find some more permeable material. Well, our ordinance today is going to pretty much request that we use some type of permeable material. And I don't think we should be pouring concrete. How do y'all feel about that?
Um, I, I just, I can't support this one. I just, I'm sorry, I don't like the addition to the driveway to make, because they don't have the space.
I think I have no problem with having the space. The only thing I would put in the conditions is that it must be some type of permeable surface to put it in there because they meet everything, there's no opposition. And they, I just think we need to have some type of permeable surface. We're, we're trying to go this way for a reason, especially the beach area. Anybody?
So you're saying we need to add that requirement?
I would like to see that, but if Mrs. Oliver's not going to support it, then we're going to have to hear it anyway.
Oh, I don't, well, I just, I, I just think that, looking at the, the layout of the property and the addition, I mean... Sorry, Bobby. Looking at the property, the, the addition of a driveway, it just, it's a road, no pun intended, that I don't particularly think is the way we want to go in. I know that council in the past has eliminated a bedroom versus adding a parking pad. If I'm, correct me if I'm mistaken in that. But I, if, um, if George is fine with it and I'm with the David as far as the not pouring a parking pad of concrete, then.
Hey, Dave.
Jack.
I mean, I, I like Dave's, you know, thoughts, thoughts on this. I think whatever we do, it needs to, you know, we need to be consistent in this. And that if, if we are, you know, looking at these in terms of, you know, limiting the ability to, to do the short-term rental, then it's really something we'd have to carry through as a consistency, you know, across the board, you know, as a precedent. And I think that the, the permeable surface, you know, may not look as good as a hardened, you know, structured surface, but I think that that's what, you know, what we've discussed recently. So I, I, I don't know, but whatever we do, I think it, it would need to propagate into the future if we do make a decision to limit this based on the need to add a parking space.
I understand the consistency and I'm, I agree with you 100%, but this is one where George hasn't, has not, George has not received any type of opposition or phone calls on it. And staff has not received any opposition or phone calls on it. So I tend to support it in that aspect, but the only thing... So I tend to support it in that aspect, but the only thing I can't support would be the, would be the driveway pouring more concrete. But, Mr. Akraz, it's your area, so it's up, you make the decision.
I mean, I appreciate that, but you just said consistency, and I think we need to do it overall. So are we gonna do that every, on every one, not just the one in Lakewood? So that's what I wanna discuss.
As in adding driveway? Yes, I would think so, yes.
Is, is that the consensus of the board is what I need to know?
Everybody speak up.
Mr. Wall.
Ms. Klein?
Can we have the front of the house picture again, please? Thank you. So I think that this looks nice. Thinking about four or five of these houses, all with additional concrete or permeable surfaces, I think is gonna look distasteful in the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm. So you're saying don't allow any type of other parking? I'm just trying to clear it.
Sure, so I would say that I do not support adding additional parking to the front of the house.
For them to get this application, they have to have another parking space?
Understood.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Eman?
I agree with, I agree with her. I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not a fan of having to add, add, add concrete and, or even permeable surface. I can't really tell on this particular one where that's gonna go. Is it on the right side or the left side?
It would get, you know, it would go to the left, where the bushes are, yeah. The bushes would have to be gone.
So, so they're gonna take out, take out the shrubs and put in some gravel or something, you know?
Are we gonna hear that, we're gonna, you wanna hear this one? Let's discuss it.
Dave?
Yes, sir.
I had a question. I understand what you said a while ago, the council has eliminated bedrooms instead of putting, did I catch that? Is that legal to do? I mean, can you, can you say where you can only have two bedrooms and two parking spaces? Can we do that?
I'm not sure.
So
Bobby?
I'm unsure if council has actually approved one that has come forward with the reduction in the bedrooms. That, those have come up, and those have been deferred, and the applicant had to choose whether they wanted to try to eliminate bedrooms or not. So I don't, I don't know if any of them, I don't know if any of them have actually, although the applicant has proposed it as a solution, I am unaware if any of them have actually been approved in that manner.
So Bobby, there was the one on, it was a little cottage on twenty, Twentieth Street, and they didn't have enough parking, and they had a little bitty, but they had two bedrooms and somewhere, and probably that's what happened, it got to council, and they just pulled it because they only wanted, they had two bedrooms and they were going to one because there was no way that they could get the car in the driveway. It's probably what my recollection is of that.
And I'm sorry, Summer, Summer, as always, Summer being on top of it. She's, she's gone through it, and she said that there have at least been one, but potentially two that have had the bedroom reduction as, as part of it, so.
Of course, I don't know how you enforce that.
Well, that, that sheds a new, new wrinkle. You know, I kinda agree with what Mike and Robin said, you know. I, I think putting in another parking place out there is, is, is really gonna ruin the character of that, that whole area there.
That's the part I couldn't pick up.
Okay. So I, you know, I don't, I don't think I'm gonna support this.
George?
Is there any speakers on this one?
There are no speakers signed up for this item.
Okay, well, I mean, well, I guess we'll hear it.
We're gonna have to hear it, okay.
Discuss it formally.
We will hear this one.
Okay. Hey, David.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jack.
One thing I have is that by right, they could, they could just put a parking space in there, and then all this, they could come back, they could come back. If...
Wouldn't that need to be permitted, though?
Is that, is that the case, which is?
That's correct. They could, if they weren't asking for a short-term rental, they could still expand their driveway.
Mm-hmm.
But they would have to get a permit for the driveway expansion.
Correct, but there's no, there's nothing, I don't have a, I don't have a mechanism to stop them from widening their driveway. It is permitted for them to widen the driveway on the property.
I think you see it oftentimes when people, for whatever reason, kids start driving, whatever, they widen their driveways. I mean, I, I'd vote for it if they wanted to go permeable, if that's what we think is the consensus. I'm in favor of that, too.
Okay. Well, we're gonna hear it, so we'll discuss it, we'll have a discussion. All right, moving on to item ten.
Will, you can pause for three seconds and start your presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, I apologize. Twenty-five thirteen Morton's Road, Bayside District. This four thousand two hundred and sixty square foot lot is located within the R five R Shore Drive Residential District and contains one duplex-style dwelling, with each unit containing two bedrooms. The applicant also owns and currently resides in the abutting unit at twenty-five fifteen Morton's Road, but that is not part of this application. Only twenty-five thirteen is part of this application. According to city records, the duplex was constructed in nineteen fifty. However, it was mostly rebuilt in two thousand and nineteen after sustaining severe fire damage. The applicant purchased the duplex building on March the eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. On-street parking is prohibited on the west side of Morton's Road and is permitted on most of the east side of Morton's Road. Therefore, any overflow parking beyond the minimum parking spaces could occur within parts of the east side of Morton's Road. No records of zoning violations relating to the short-term rental use were found associated with the subject address. The applicant accepts city council's recently imposed conditions, reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom. This R five R S D-zoned lot is located within the community of Chesapeake Beach and contains one duplex-style building as previously noted. Again, due to the severe fire damage, a majority of the structure was reconstructed in two thousand and nineteen. The applicant's submitted parking plan depicts two required off-street parking spaces within an existing compacted gravel driveway, which was refreshed with new gravel during the reconstruction of the duplex in two thousand and nineteen. As a result of the original structure's construction year, which was nineteen fifty, the property does not contain a code-compliant driveway entry apron. Therefore, staff recommends a condition requiring the placement of a code-compliant driveway apron for the address associated with this request. As permitted by Section two forty-one two-one of the City Zoning Ordinance, the zoning administrator reviewed the parking plan and deemed it acceptable. Furthermore, the requirements of Section two forty-one point two of the zoning ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals can be reasonably met by the applicant. Based on these considerations, staff recommends approval of this request with the conditions listed in the staff report. Five letters of support and zero letters of opposition were received by staff relating to this request. I'll stand by for any questions you may have relating to this item. Thank you.
Any questions? And no, nobody signed up to speak on this one? Wa.
No speakers.
And this is Bayside, so we're not gonna ask Mr. Redmond what he thinks. Consent? Ms. Klein?
So I'm inclined to support this. The homeowner is in the attached property, and so it's in his best interest if the renters are well-behaved during their stay for his own benefit and the neighborhoods. So I would support this application.
We good with consent on this one?
Okay.
Okay? Consent on this, okay? On number eleven?
All right, number eleven. This is nine forty-seven Indian Circle. This is in the Beach District. This three thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine square foot lot is located within the A twelve Apartment District and contains one townhome situated within a row of seven. According to city records, this home was constructed in nineteen seventy-five and contains three bedrooms. The applicant purchased the home on December the seventh, two thousand, twenty twenty. On-street parking is permitted twenty-four hours per day. Therefore, any overflow parking the minute, beyond the minimum parking spaces required could occur within the public street. However, due to the configuration of the parking spaces associated with each townhome, the nine hundred block of Indian Circle has limited on-street parking availability. Most occurs at the end of the cul-de-sac. New rec, no records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental use were found associated with the subject address. The applicant accepts city council's recently imposed conditions, reducing the number of bookings in a seven-day period to one and limiting the overnight guest calculation to two per bedroom. This property is located within the Indian Circle Townhome Subdivision, which was platted in nineteen seventy-five and contains twenty-eight townhomes. Because the subject address contains three bedrooms, three off-street parking spaces are required. To accommodate this need, the applicant submitted a parking plan showing three designated areas within the existing driveway. The first two proposed parking areas are arranged in a typical pull-in, back-out fashion and meet all dimensional requirements of the City Zoning Ordinance. The third parking area is positioned in a parallel manner and is located directly behind the other two spaces. However, this parking area does not meet the minimum dimensional requirements for a parallel parking space, which is twenty-two feet long. The applicant was made aware of this matter and attempted to reduce the bedroom count through the city assessor's office. However, this request was unsuccessful. As a result, the city's reported bedroom count remains at three. Because of this, and since there appears to be no commercial off-site parking space opportunities within one-quarter miles of the subject property, the applicant has chosen to move forward with this request as is and will be asking the planning commission to approve the parking plan with the noted parallel space length deficiency. If the applicant's request is not granted, he stated that he would be willing to discontinue the use of one of the bedrooms and is prepared to accept any condition opposed upon the property by the planning commission if you see fit to do so. Because of the parallel parking space length deficiency, the zoning administrator found the proposed parking plan to be unacceptable as allowed by Section two forty-one two-one of the City Zoning Ordinance. Nevertheless, the remaining requirements of Section two forty-one two of the City Zoning Ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals can be reasonably met by the applicant. Based on these considerations, staff recommends denial of this request. Staff received no letters of support or opposition relating to this request. I'll stand by for any questions that you may have relating to this item. Thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and side with the planning department's recommendation. I just, does that mean I can put on consent, or do we have to hear it?
We have to hear it.
Okay.
We have to hear it. Okay, we will hear this one. If we have comments, or we can talk about it. Okay. On the next one, twelve?
Summer, if you can pause for three seconds and then you start your presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, planning commissioners. This item is Charles K. Bain and Kathy Bain, located at nine one five Pacific Avenue, Unit S. This one-bedroom condominium unit is located in the Retreat by the Sea condominium. One parking space is required and is provided on-site. All other requirements of Section two forty-one point two of the zoning ordinance regulating short-term rentals can be reasonably met by the applicant, and the applicant is agreeable to the recent city council condition changes. I'll stand by to answer any questions.
George?
I don't have a problem at all with this one. It kinda fits in exactly where it should be for that kinda use.
Yep, all right. We good with consent? Everybody good with consent on this one? All right, on consent? And on to thirteen.
Seventeen Dagri Lane in the Centerville District.
I forgot to start over.
Presentation over, please, hold for three seconds.
The last item is Jamie Diamond, located at thirty-eight seventeen Dagri Lane in the Centerville District. This is an eleven thousand six hundred and forty-nine square foot parcel's owned PDH-one planned unit development. This single-family dwelling contains three bedrooms, thus three off-street parking spaces are required, are required. There is an existing twelve-foot by twenty-and-a-half-foot driveway that is used for parking, as well as a one-car garage. It is the applicant's intention to use the garage to accommodate one parking space and to widen the existing driveway to accommodate the third additional parking space. The applicant has submitted an alternative parking plan that shows this proposed improvement and the use of the garage for one parking space. The zoning administrator has deemed this plan acceptable. If this request is granted, a condition is recommended that requires the placement of the driveway addition within sixty days of the city council public hearing. All other requirements of Section two forty-one point two of the zoning ordinance regulating short-term rentals can be reasonably met by the applicant. The applicant is agreeable to the recent city council condition changes. Staff has received two letters of support. I'll stand by to answer any questions you may have.
Mrs. Klein?
So I drove past here. I am not a fan of the proposed parking plan. I actually would have preferred if they had gone the other way to expand the driveway. The neighborhood, I think, is fine for the short-term rental, but I'm not a fan of the parking plan as, as it exists right now.
Would you like to make a condition or change something? You can always do that. We can change the condition to make it do as long as it, the zoning administrator says it's okay and there's room on the other side.
That's so much power.
Looks like the front yard on the other side, though.
Yeah, I know, it's front yard on both sides, really. I mean, this is no different...
I mean, it's actually in front of the door, that's the porch on that house.
Yeah, I know. It's gonna change the look of the neighborhood, as we were talking about, but they have to have that third space to get the initial use permit.
So, Mr. Zoning Administrator? Was there a reason that they did not consider a, the third, the third space on the opposite side of the driveway?
I believe it would just be a preference to not, as Commissioner Costin said, to not have it directly in front of their front door.
If you wanted to extend that question to Summer, she is the one who, you know, negotiated with the property owner, but that would be my, my guess.
Summer, are you still there?
So the applicant had contacted a contractor to come out and take, look at adding a driveway addition, and that was the area that they had discussed. And I, that was the result of their conversation that she let me know and the alternative parking plan she submitted. So perhaps you could discuss this with the applicant, perhaps look at adding it on the other side instead of this side. But that was the discussion she had with a contractor a couple of weeks ago.
And I'm sorry, I mean, the part where you were talking about off-street parking, is that permitted in front of this house?
Um, yes, it is. Off-street parking is permitted here. There is no prohibited parking in this area of the neighborhood. Um, yes.
So I'd like to hear this one.
Okay. All right, we can talk to the applicant. All right, we will hear this one. And thirteen to be heard. All right, that takes care of all that.
Dave, can I ask, can I ask Kevin a question?
Sure, yes, sir.
If somebody redesigned that and put half of the space on one side of the existing driveway and half on the other side, is that possible?
Yes, absolutely. It becomes an issue of having the correct space, so if it were shifted, as you described, that would be an acceptable plan.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, takes care of all, yes, yes, sir.
Are you still going back to item two?
Yes, sir, we're gonna be back to item two number, right now. We're good for item two.
All right. Good morning, chairman and members of... Good morning, Chairman and members of commission. I will briefly go over item two. My goal here is to really get on the record and remind you of what was discussed. If you'll remember, you've had two virtual workshops on January twenty-eighth and February twenty-second. You've discussed all these items, so I'm going to remind you where those discussions, where the consensus was. So as to really direct the formal hearing and how we, you will move forward with the recommendation. So it is divided up. In the staff report, we divided it up into two A, B, C, D, E, and F, just to make it easier. What you're seeing here on the screen in front of you, item two, this is all of them. You know, and one, we broke it up for ease of consideration of the items. So Cole, if you go to item A. Item A is the ordinance to establish the short-term rental districts, the actual overlay districts. And there are three overlay districts that were referred to you by city council and they were the East Shore Drive, the North End, and the Oceanfront Resort District, and I'll briefly go through each one. The first is the East Shore Drive overlay. You're seeing in that picture what council referred to you. The northern boundary of the bay, the eastern boundary of the park. The difference between what council referred and what you discussed deals with the southern boundary. Council referred an ordinance that went down to the Cape Henry Drive, which is the bike path. What you discussed in your workshops was moving that southern boundary north to Shore Drive. So the overlay would then come right down Shore Drive, go all the way over to that condominium complex you see on the west side, shoot up to the bay. And that was the only difference in the, in the area. You also discussed allowing short-term rentals in this by conditional use permit where council referred it to you as a permitted by right. And then there was the discussion of capping density. For this overlay, you discussed it as a ten percent of all dwelling units, maximum being a short-term rental. The next overlay is the North End overlay. This is essentially the existing North End overlay. When it gets to the southern part of it, it goes straight down Holly Road. So, you know, the southeastern or southwestern part of the existing overlay was excluded from the short-term rental portion. That area remained the same. The biggest discussion you had in your workshops was adding the Hollies, which is the area from Forty-Ninth and a Half Street down to Forty-Fifth Street that kind of wedges in between the Oceanfront Resort and the North End to add that area into the overlay district. You can see that on the bottom there. Again, just as you did on the East Shore Drive, you talked about permitting short-term rentals by a conditional use permit where the council referral was to permit them by right. Again, you talked about a density cap. However, in this district, the density cap that you discussed was a fifteen percent of all dwelling units being short-term rentals. The last of the overlay districts is the Oceanfront Resort. The area encompassed in this overlay is the entire Oceanfront Resort overlay as it stands now and as it was created. The, what you discussed was adding in the resort tourism zone properties into this overlay. That is what that map in the middle shows. There are not too many remaining properties that are zoned RT. Most of them were changed to the OR in that mass zoning. However, the few properties that do remain to add those in and have the same criteria as the Oceanfront Resort overlay, which is to allow short-term rentals by right as council passed it down to you. Additionally, you talked about the rental requirement, number of contracts in permitted per week and different than the other overlays. You thought that two rental contracts per week were appropriate in this area. Chairman, did you have a question, Chairman? I am wrapped up with two A, so if you have a question, I'm happy.
That's what I thought. So for everybody here, what we're gonna do is we're gonna break these down to two A, two B, C through F and vote on those individually like that after we hear all the speakers. But just, you know, what Kevin just talked about there, we got pretty much everything written down. We'll go over so we can vote on these individually like that. Is that okay with everybody? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Klein?
So I applaud that idea. For item two A, does, is it all or nothing for the overlay districts?
No. B, that's where we're gonna come in and we're gonna break it down, but we're gonna have to discuss how we wanna break it down, how we wanna vote on it. Well, not how we vote on it. It's how you vote on it, it's how you vote on it, but we need to discuss how we wanna break it down to vote on it. Okay? And that is correct, right? Yes.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we're doing two A.
Okay, on to two B. Two B coincides with two A and that is just the ordinance that establishes these overlays onto the official zoning map once they're adopted. So there's really, you know, the action on two B relates directly to two A. Onto two C, and this is really the guts of, of the proposal and this deals with establishing regulations and rules for short-term rentals in these overlay districts. Again, I'll remind you that when council passed, referred these ordinances to you, they referred the short-term rental use as permitted by right. You have discussed that it would be permitted by a conditional use permit, but when I go through these, keep in mind that council was saying it's permitted by right if they meet these conditions. So what I will do, and I passed out a sheet, you know, similar to what you saw at your workshop where you can take notes and it shows what the council referred, what you discussed in your workshop and then, you know, an area for you to take notes today. But I'll briefly, you know, go through these. If nothing's changed, you know, it'll be pretty evident, but.
Can I say something real quick, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
So on the, on the, on the staff reports, under two C, it's really spelled out pretty good too because the summary referred to the ordinances is there and then the recommendation is what we came up with on our workshop, which is spelled out pretty nicely except for the add-in the CUP five-year outside overlay areas. We need to add that in there. But anyway, just go ahead. I just wanted to make that point for everybody to follow.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Okay, I'll just go through these. Definition of home sharing. We all know that nothing has changed with the city referral or what you've discussed. The sign posted on the, the home, city council did not refer any change to this. What you have discussed is requiring a posting on the outside of the home of a contact phone number of the operator or representative of the short-term rental and that posting must be visible from the public right-of-way. Registration and taxes, the referral ordinance had no changes. However, it is noted there that per city council dis- direction, we are moving forward with creating a zoning permit, which is an annual license that will be submitted to the zoning office with a fee attached. Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong. You will see this in April?
That, that is correct. It's part of the preparation for the budget, so you'll see that fee in, in April.
So. Okay, this is a rather easy slide. Trash insurance, noise, criteria of grandfathering and use of accessory structures. There was no change recommended by council and you agree with council's referred ordinance on that. I did note on the grandfathered section that staff proposed to be able to administratively, administratively remove the grandfather status if the SDR was vacant for two years. However, this was not included in the referred ordinance by, by council. Violations, nothing has changed with the city council referral and you agreed with the referral. Establishing overlay districts, I went over this when we discussed two A about the OR and RT zoning districts, allowing short-term rentals by right and the East Shore Drive and North End by conditional use. That is different than the council referral. In, in both, new short-term rentals would be prohibited outside of these overlay districts. We discussed the boundary changes to the East Shore Drive, the inclusion of the Hollies and the RT properties and the density caps. That was all included in the discussion for two A. Requirement for a conditional use permit in the council referral, it would do away with conditional use permits. If the short-term rental were in an overlay district, it would be permitted by right if it meets the conditions. If it was located outside of the overlay district, it was prohibited. What you have discussed in your workshops is keeping conditional use permits for short-term rentals in two of the three proposed overlay districts. Another discussion, allow administrator approval and review for CUPs every five years. The way it stands, if there is a CUP and per our ordinance, it has a five-year life span to it, when that CUP comes up again, that person could not reapply for a CUP because due to the council referral, it wouldn't be a permitted use. So that CUP would go away. What you have discussed is allowing an administrative approval for existing CUPs so that if they haven't exhibited violations, have had good behavior, that they could continue. And if violations are found, it would be at the onus of the planning director, planning department to move forward with city coun- to city council for revocation of use permit. Yes?
That, and I discussed this with Mr. DeHaan, that was not in, located in the some part and that's where it should be in two C, correct? And that, that, so we need to add that somewhere in, in two C.
Okay.
If, if everybody's on board with that? We need to add that on board so after a five-year conditional use permit, it would be administratively reviewed.
Yep, and we will, in the time between the informal and the formal, we'll figure out exactly what that language would be and where it would be.
Is that with?
Yes, Commissioner.
Is that, is that, is that with or without the overlay? Without the overlay, I just wanna make sure.
Well, there has been that discussion. Well, that would be up to, I think, the discussion, the way I was hearing it with the workshops was all existing CUPs.
That would, if we, if the overlay was removed, I just wanna clarify just to make sure. If the overlay was removed and there would be no more additional short-term rentals, everything that was registered now would be able to continue the use for five years and then have an administrative review.
That's what the discussion centered around.
They would, they would be able to continue. We wouldn't take that away or remove them.
Correct, and that's what it, you know, you could take that direction any way you wanted if you only wanted to do that in the overlays or outside, you know, but the discussion centered around, you know, that property right of that owner, you know, that had the use permit if they are not exhibiting detrimental behavior to the neighborhood, being able to extend that use.
Okay.
But also, Dee, that is even if the overlay is still kept. So basically, if the North End overlay is still there or, well, the overlay is gonna stay there if we don't add to the overlay and the North End, this will still go forward as a conditional use permit in the whole city to be administratively reviewed.
Okay.
Correct? Am I good with that? Okay.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Nicole, could you go back one? Parking, this, the one off-street space per bedroom remain the same. The changes that you discussed from the council referral, council said that one space within a garage area may be counted if it met the dimensional requirements. Your discussion said, well, if you have larger garages, why wouldn't you be able to count all the spaces in that garage? So you changed that word one to all. The other change was just really wording. Council referred as any spaces added on-site shall be impervious material. What you discussed is making this consistent with our Chesapeake Bay ordinance, which is really in our world, it's the only definition we have for impervious material. So any spaces added on-site shall be, not be impervious, and that's just a consistency thing. The residential parking permit, you're very familiar with this condition as it's been added on every property that's come, come before you in the RPP area where guests, temporary and guest passes cannot be used to cover short-term parking when it's in use. Council referred it. You have no change from council. Special events, council referrals, yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Like, you said something, caught me off-guard there for a minute. So we agree that parking, added parking spaces shall not be impervious. Okay, no, we're good. We're good. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. We're good.
All right. Catching me off-guard. Special events, no events associated with short-term rental. Will have more persons than the maximum occupancy of the property and a short-term rental may not request a special event permit. Now, we've had this discussion before, special event permits, you know, it's a high level of people, a hundred and fifty people is what triggers that. These large events, you know, are really the root of several problems associated with short-term rentals. So to get that out, you know, any, any consideration of that out of the ordinance, you agreed with council's referral on that. Identification of a responsible party. The big change here is they still have to provide a responsible party with a address and contact information. The big difference is that council then added the requirement that they must be able to physically respond to the site within thirty minutes. You agreed with a large portion of that. However, you discussed the response time and talked about changing that to one hour rather than thirty minutes so that, you know, the responsible party, they get a call that there's a problem, they have to be able to address it within thirty minutes, but they have an hour to physically respond to the site if that is necessary. Number of rental contracts, the council referral has worded not more than fifty-two rental contracts during a calendar year. You discussed during your workshops the, you know, the possibility that these rental contracts, how many could be in a week, that you could load them in the summer and, you know, that sort of scenario and you decided to take it in a different direction and discussed, you know, depending on what overlay, how many contracts per week in the North End and East Shore Drive, one contract per week and in the OR and RT zoning districts to have two contracts per week. Maximum occupancy, again, this is a condition, yes, sir?
Real quick, is everybody good with that and how we, how we worded that there? Is our gift, can we talk about this right now?
Yes, absolutely.
Is everybody good with that with inside the RT and OR districts that we talked about at our workshop? Jack?
So this is, this is two forty-one point two, section two forty-one, and two forty-one point two, does this apply to? This applies citywide. So, Mr. Wall, the, the way that this was to be written, again, because of, because of the change and we haven't written the language based on your proposal yet, but as it was referred by city council, there's a separate section created for those that are in the overlays and it says which ones they have to follow. So the referral ordinance has a new section. I forget what, what section it was.
Section twenty-two oh-three.
Twenty-two oh-three, and it says they will need to meet all these criteria and they can only rent so many days per week and.
And another factor in orchestrating it that way is with Sandbridge and what impacts Sandbridge.
So you're saying it?
These new regulations for the overlay do not impact Sandbridge for the most part. And if they do pertain to Sandbridge, we specifically call it out.
Okay, thanks.
Maximum occupancy, you've had this condition on most every application that's come through for months now. The original ordinance said three per bedroom. It's been two per bedroom. You've been putting this condition on. So that is what was referred. It did go into a little more detail. That person's under the age of sixteen shall not be counted, but in no case shall the total number of people, including under sixteen, exceed three per bedroom.
Excuse me, I wanna back up for a minute there.
Yes, sir.
I thought you were going to discuss something a little bit longer. The two rentals per week, we're just doing that just in the beach and the...
The resort, RT and the OR districts.
Okay.
And in the rest of the city, the rest of the city be one per seven days?
I, I still, I still like two per seven days.
Okay, we can discuss that.
Does anybody, how does everybody feel about that?
I missed that, can you say it again, sorry? Mr. Cosson, can I?
I'm, I'm proposing that we just have two rentals per week for all short-term rentals, as opposed to only at the oceanfront.
Go back.
I'm, I'm...
Yeah, I can't do that.
Yeah, I can't, and I'm going to tell you the reason why I can't do that, because there's a lot of short-term rentals that are in neighborhoods.
Okay.
Not just at the beach. If we could, I don't think legally we could call them out because we can't make them a, an overlay area, like there is already at the beach. If I'm not mistaken, that, isn't that correct? So we can't say everything west of, whatever, Laskin Road or whatever, not Laskin Road, but First Colonial Road, everything west of First Colonial, only one per seven days, we can't do that. They have to have an overlay area. Isn't that correct? Am I correct in saying that? Mr. Tan?
I'm just saying be consistent.
Well, being, well, the OR and RT district is, is, is the resort area.
Uh-huh.
And that's why we're keeping it down there.
Yeah, Mr. Cosson, between the two zoning category, or three zoning categories, you got three different, three different animals there, just different situations. That's why the OR and the RT was called out, and west of, or east of Baltic.
Okay. We can discuss, I'm sorry.
John, in the past, in, in the north end area, the density is so high, in those lots, they're only 50 feet, and some of them have more than one, as you know, you're well aware of, they have more than one dwelling unit on a piece of property. And so, when you add an extra rental per week, it makes it very, not very harmonious with the residents of the streets. It's very disruptive, disruptive, and it's, the residents are speaking really loudly about that.
So we're doing one in the OR and the?
No, 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 no. Two in the OR and two in the RT, but all other residential zoning is one per week.
So the north end will be one?
One per week, yes, sir.
And Shore Drive?
And Shore Drive.
Right.
Okay. Basically, the whole city.
One thing is that the correspondence, you know, received from the latest supplemental package had quite a, quite a few comments on that, from the north end, being, you know, the requests to do one, one per week, so, I mean, that weighed, certainly weighed on me. And I'm, you know, when we hear it, we'll hear, you know, input, but that, that certainly was...
I'd, I'd just like, like to confirm that everybody saw the supplemental that was sent out yesterday afternoon, 625 pages worth?
Okay. Yes.
Lot, lot of negative comments, obviously.
Okay, well, I mean, we're going to, we're going to talk about it when we start getting into that. That number two is, number 2C is actually, actually the meat and potatoes of the whole ordinance, so we'll be talking about that one as we get into that. Okay, Kevin?
All right, I'll wrap up 2C. Time limitations, we've already discussed, you know, about allowing that administrative approval after five years, and with bad behavior, bringing it back to council for revocation. Maximum density, we've also talked about with the 10% in the Shore Drive overlay and a 15% cap in the north end overlay. Item 2D is...
Don't say Kevin.
Yes.
Well, we're going to discuss all that when we get there, so keep on going, Kevin.
All right. Item 2D is just amending the use tables in each section where short-term rentals are listed as uses, depending on what the ordinance, what passes, what's a conditional use, what's permitted, the use tables in the zoning ordinance would be amended to reflect what you, you know, what is approved. 2E is establishing transition rules. This is actually something we've been doing, as city council referred this to you on October 20th, so any application for a conditional use permit received after that date, when it goes to council, is subject to the rules that are in place at the time it is at council. We've been following these, and this is just a, a standard ordinance when we're considering a change such as this. Lastly, 2F is the additional safety requirements. Can you go one more, Nicole? If you'll remember, Councilwoman Henley spearheaded this effort due to a few decks that collapsed this past season down in the Sandbridge area, so she asked us to look at additional safety requirements. Yes, Chairman?
I have a question. That's actually in 2C.
Um...
Or did we move that?
It was, I broke it out into 2F to make it easier as it was pulled...
Okay, that's fine, I just, I was getting ready to ask a question, because I'm looking at it in 2C.
It was, I did that after it went to printing.
No problem, okay, no problem.
So, the, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
It would be easier to pull this out to a separate, as it is a separate ordinance as written, so. Life safety requirements, as council referred it, a owner representative would have to provide the zoning ordinance with a signed affidavit annually stating that fire extinguishers are installed, where they're installed, smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors are in compliance with the building code, and that they have been inspected annually. You did not discuss any changes from this requirement, from the council referral. The deck safety, council referred that a structural report must be submitted to the zoning office, must indicate that all exterior stairs, decks, porches and balconies are safe. The inspection must be done by a licensed engineer or construction professional, and that the occupant load must be noted and put on a placard displayed at the property. This is where you had a pretty in-depth discussion. One change you made was that rather than this report being submitted annually, you talked about putting a, every five years for the report being submitted. Then you went on and discussed who would be the appropriate persons and professionals to perform these inspections, and the wording you suggested for that was the inspections must be done by a licensed design professional or licensed constructional, construction professional, and then you discussed Class A, Class B, as a qualified construction professional.
Can I, can I talk about that, please?
Sure, yes, sir.
So, I, I really don't agree with Class A, Class B. I mean, to get, to get a Class A, Class B, you got to have certain level of, I guess, that you can withstand economically in the industry, but you, you take a course and you get your Class A. Definitely, Class B, it should not be on here, they're just a tradesman that might do the trim or install the deck, but someone that's going to be responsible enough to, for a five-year report, I, I really, I'm really strongly suggesting that you do either a structural engineer or an architect on that, because I was a Class A too, I'm just saying, I know what it takes to get a Class A, and they're not, you, you don't have to be, I don't see the liability going back to the Class A if something wants to happen. I really strongly suggest that, when you say professional, that it go to a architect or a structural engineer. And definitely, please, not a Class B, you just go get a license for that.
I don't, I don't even remember Class B being on our inspection, I don't know, maybe it was, I don't remember that. So what you're saying is actually, since it's, since we're looking at five years, to actually have a structural engineer or an architect actually look and put a stamp on this?
Yeah, they're the only ones that can stamp something.
Right, sure.
It's their license.
Yep.
It's their certification.
Okay.
A Class A or a B doesn't have certification.
Right.
They can write a letter and say it looks okay, but where does the liability fall, is what I'm concerned about.
We can change that when we go to vote on it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, are you going to be available, so when we go through all this, when we go to vote on these things, you can stand there and direct us through all this?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, just a, I'm sorry, just a, just a, generalize it, just a smidge for Mr. Alcaraz, just so that we don't run awry with anything with DEPOR. We do say, register, we can say registered design professional that has the necessary qualifications to do that type of work, so...
Material, yeah.
Yeah, it's, if we hone in on one specific one, DEPOR doesn't like that, so we kind of need to step back and say if they're qualified and they, and they can do the seal. I know it's splitting hairs, but I just want to make sure we don't just say architect or structural engineer, because there are some that branch outside of some of their certifications, but their main certification might be, I don't know, a civil engineer, but they might do structural engineering as well, so, again, just as a heads-up.
I totally, I totally agree with that, I just know that what your department, your, the permits director would like to see, to take that liability off the city.
Right.
And off of us, too, thanks.
Mr. Wall?
Does everybody know, would they know what deck, deck means, by defining, you know, just by the, the way that it's, it's stated? I mean, what's the, I mean, I would say, I could say, well, this is deck, and somebody would say, well, your six foot, six inch, you know, thing off the ground is a deck.
Right, and I don't know off the top of my head, to be honest, we usually, in situations like this, in the zoning world, we like to defer back to definitions in the building code if we can. We like to have consistency there, I am not entirely sure how the building code defines deck, which is an interesting question, and I do remember, you jogged my memory on that discussion as to, well, would we require this with a ground-level deck that's only six inches off the ground? What, you know, safety hazard is that really presenting versus a second-story deck? Or does a screen porch require this certification? So, I, I think we could probably do some research in the interim, and I think that might be a good conversation to have.
Doesn't, doesn't a ground-level deck, or like, six inches off the ground, it doesn't require a building permit, is that correct?
A, a ground-level deck typically does not require a building permit, that's correct.
So would we want to define it as a deck that requires a building permit?
And I think that's going to be defined in the building code also.
Yeah.
So I think this should be, follow the building code, this particular one should be.
There is a Virgin, 2012 Virginia Residential Code Typical Deck Details, put out by the city, that has all of the notes on what is considered a deck under Virginia law. But, I'm not going to interpret for you, but that's available for us to reference.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
So any deck, when you build it, is structural. I know you guys have built decks, so I, I say overall decks, because when you build a deck, it's still holding up above the ground, it's still got members above the ground, it's got to be supported properly. If it's not supported and connected right, it could still cave in, six inches, five feet, whatever, I think it's still the same, I think a deck's a deck.
Concrete and wood?
I don't think concrete's considered a deck, is it? That's considered, like, a patio.
Well, then, we, but we do have, it actually calls out for, must include exterior decks, porches and balconies.
You, you could have, you know, it's, think about hotels and apartment buildings, you know, they have balconies that are concrete. So as it is written, it's not material-specific, so yes, the concrete would be included as material.
Okay. Mike, did you want to add something? No, okay, all right, I'm sure we can, we're going to dig into this one, too, so we can define it right, how we want to get put, how we want to do it.
And that is what I've got for you, for this informal presentation, so...
Okay.
If there are no more questions, I look forward to standing in front of you at the formal.
We're, we're going to hear this one. I think we're going to hear this one.
I was, I was hoping for consent, but I was overly optimistic.
We were too.
So, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Just direct, so I'm, I'm being asked, I'm getting calls, and, asked, A-S-K, the enforcement of this, are, is the city hiring more staff, Mr. DeHaan or Kevin?
I'll thank you, Kevin. Yes, we are hiring additional enforcement staff to, to do this. We, we understand that as part of this is, it's bookended, right? So we're, we're going to push these regulations, we need to do proactive enforcement, where we're actually going out and inspecting these on a, on a random rotating basis throughout the year, and so that is, that is part of the program as we move forward. So Kevin, as he's been working on this, has also been working on putting together the program for enforcement as well, so...
So when there is a violation, is, is part of the program going to go out to that residence and talk to them, or do you just take a report?
Yeah.
Yes, the plan would be to have boots-on-the-ground-type
Okay.
of staff. You know, I'll be very, very frank, that filling these positions is proving to be challenging. So, but, yes, eventually, we would like to have those, you know, we have the two components of enforcement. We have the office component, which is the tracking, which is the ensuring they're registered, collecting any applicable fees, you know, I have that end, and then you have the field, which is out there, you know, meeting with the neighbors, investigating, dealing with, you know, working hand-in-hand with the police with 3-1-1, to put together those pieces to then be able to track.
Perfect.
Then, you know, worked within that is the third-party contract we have with host compliance, which monitors activity and identifies short-term rentals. So that's kind of how the enforcement, the, you know, 60,000-foot view of enforcement. Now, you know, my challenge is to dig in and really try to get those pieces working to, to make that happen.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
I got a question.
Okay, towards it.
Back on this decks, is, what structures do decks, these restrictions apply to? Does this apply to every deck in the city? Every home in the city that has a deck?
Every home that is being used as a short-term rental that has it.
It has to be used as a rental?
Correct, yes, this does not span across every home in the city, only if it is a short-term rental use.
Okay. All right, so, we're good to go, we'll, on this, and we'll, we'll enjoy having you up here with us.
All right, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so before we go any far, let's make sure we have everything, what we're doing here, you want to go through, let me go through this real quick, you want to go through it?
Yeah, I'll go through it. For agenda item number one, we have consent, and the city's going to read that one. Agenda item number two, we're going to hear. Agenda item number three is consent, and Mr. Redmond's going to read that one. Agenda item number four is consent, Mr. Horsley's going to read that one. Agenda item number five, we're going to hear. Number six and seven is consent, and Ms. Klein is going to read that one. Agenda item number eight is deferred, or has requested deferral, and I'm unsure what the...
Thirty days.
Thirty days, okay. Agenda item number nine, we're going to hear. Agenda item number 10 is consent, this is the short-term rental. Number 10? Morton's Road, that one is...
Oh, consent, I'm sorry.
Yep, consent, yeah, that's, that's up in Chick's Beach. Okay. Agenda item number 11, we're going to hear. 12 is consent. And agenda item number 13, we're going to hear.
Mr. Wall, may I, as part of the consent agenda, I'm sorry, the items number six and, I guess, item number six, the conditional use permit for the bulk storage, for the damn next storage one, there was discussion... for the damn next storage one, there was discussion about the fence material. We do need to amend condition number two, to note that.
Okay.
The fence material, it's just be six-foot tall.
With, with amended condition number two for the fence material.
That's correct, okay.
All right, we're good there? Everybody on the same page? All right, who, anybody want to volunteer to do the prayer? You had it last.
Do I have it? I gave it to you.
No, I never got it. Anybody like to do the prayer?
I will, if you need me.
Mr. Costin? Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Anybody want to do the pledge? Are we going to say, just keep standing for the pledge?
I'll do it.
Okay, Mr. Horstle, thank you. All right, that's it, we are good. Any more discussions, anything at all, anybody have any questions? Nope, we are adjourned, and we'll be back at 12.